One would join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Reminder to try to use your mics as much as possible. We have an agenda in front of us. If there's no changes to that, I'd ask for a motion to approve as printed.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Gillespie.
Sean, please.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. Rolling through our payroll longevity onto the consent agenda items. Is there anything in there that needs addressing? Otherwise, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask for item B two to be removed.
An independent or tabling eventually?
Independent.
Okay. Any objection to that? Hearing on that item will be removed from the consent agenda item and placed into regular business. Is that all right?
Yes.
All right. And we have that. So with that, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda items removing B two.
So moved. Mr. Chairman, Gillespie?
Second.
Motion and second. Any other questions? Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. Takes us into the opportunity for public comment. Anybody from the audience that would like to get up and address the board or about any county issues at this time? Good morning, Mr. Jimmin, Commissioner-elect. Seeing none, I'll turn it to the board for any brief comments. Again, this is for public comment time. Is there anything anybody would like to share?
Mr. Chairman, I have an item.
Yes.
John Rumbow isn't up here, but I wanted to bring it to the board's attention that I received some information yesterday that the Beersford School System had had put in some filters down there and possibly could be put underneath the CARES Act for an expense for viruses, flus, et cetera. And I haven't reached out to John yet, but I thought he would be here. So just wanted to make the board aware that they Beersford School System had moved forward with that expenditure down there. It's apparently in the heating system.
Dave, do you want to take the lead and try to contact John here after the meeting or during the meeting and see if he has or hasn't already looked into that?
Yep.
Very good. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I have some. Sean, you want to put that up on the board?
Yes.
I'll take the first one there. Last week, the National Association of Counties had their, had a national meeting by viral and it was quite something to have well over 100 people on the same Zoom call. But the board, of which I get the pleasure of participating in, talked a great deal about COVID and the vaccine and how counties, certain counties, will play a very strategic role. That may not be necessarily for South Dakota, but other places are relying on counties to be the deliverer of vaccines. And I thought that was rather an innovative idea. So I don't know what that, what that's going to translate. The other thing is, I pulled off of, Sean, you're going to have to wiggle that thing around a little bit because if you go on the NACO website, you can get all 66 counties in South Dakota. So I thought it would be interesting, and for the public as well, to look at what information NACO has about us and how many square miles we have, what's our projected population. And I'm sure that will change because the new census should come out near the end of March, first part of April. And the number of people we have per square miles, our county government, we use the Dillon Rule, we have Board of Commissioners of five, our population. And it breaks down the population from 25 to 64, well over 50%, and people that are over 65 at about 13%. Our economy is about 2.2 billion. Our labor force is 33,000 plus. Our employment rate's 230. But I think the trend line here is what's interesting on the bottom. If you look at in 1920, we were about 14,000 residents plus. And we continued until we hit a low probably in 1960, which we were under. But if you go from the 1980s and you start looking at our trend line and you hear 2,000 and you keep going up, we have perhaps one of the fastest growing counties and will continue to do so. If you look at the area around Sioux Falls with the new number of apartments, townhomes, twin homes, whatever, are going up, you will see that we're going to be up there at who knows where the next census will be. And in 10 years, we could be kicking 100,000 people. So anyway, I just thought that was interesting. And the other part is, this past week, I met with three state legislators and they're in peer yesterday and today to try to figure out how the state is going to spend some of the COVID money that we have. I think that the state has in the, in the hundreds of millions of dollars, I made a proposal to them that the state pay for the county's portion of 2-1-1. Because 2-1-1 is statewide and the way that 2-1-1 is supported is on a tax per citizen, per person. So about 50 cents. So for some counties, it may not be a burden, but for Lincoln County with the population we have, it could be a, you know, a contribution that we could certainly use. So that's going to be interesting to see whether or not they, they adopt that or they entertain that. So they're off due diligence and, you know, we come back. One of the interesting things that one of the legislators said, well, how come you've only spent 53% of yours? And I said, well, we've spent 53% because that's what we could legally charge. And I mean, that was for our public safety and all the building. But some counties have spent 100% and they wanted to know how they could get rid of that while their numbers were much smaller. So it's going to be interesting to see what our state legislature comes up with. So that's my comments, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Very good. Anybody else? With that, Mr. Aaron requested B two to be removed from consent. I'll place it in the top of the regular business items. It is to set time and date for a public hearing to occur December 22nd, 2020, at 9:30 for the purpose of supplementing the budget, 2020 budget 24/7 fund. Is there anybody here in the audience that can clarify exactly what that 24/7 funding requirement or necessity is?
Commissioner Poppins, B two is the establishment of certain county elected officials' annual salaries.
I was looking at the wrong one then. Sorry about that. Okay, so it's for that. Am I looking at the wrong agenda?
You got the wrong agenda.
I do have the wrong agenda. Thank you, everyone. Okay, with that, Joel, I'll turn it over to you.
I'm opposed to it and I'd like to put it's on record as voting for it as opposed to going through the consent agenda.
Okay, that's fine. You would like that to be voted on. So let me get to it then. Establish certain, whereas, Sean, you want to read that and then we'll have an action on it, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
The establishment of certain county elected officials' annual salaries. Whereas the Lincoln County Commission has approved a budget for fiscal year 2021 in which it has designated certain funds for payment of annual salaries for five of its elected officials, State's Attorney, Sheriff, Auditor, Register of Deeds and Treasurer. And whereas, South Dakota codified law provides for certain statutory minimum annual salaries for these five elected officials, absent a resolution from the County Commission establishing a different annual salary for each official pursuant to SDCL 779.1, SDCL 7712 and SDCL 712.15. And whereas, it is the sense of the County Commission that these statutory minimum annual salaries are inadequate compensation for the duties discharged by these officials. And whereas, the Commission desires to establish such different annual salaries consistent with its previously adopted budget. Now therefore be it resolved by the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners that the annual salaries of the Lincoln County State's Attorney, Sheriff, Auditor, Register of Deeds and Treasurer be established effective December 20th, 2020, the first day of the 2021 payroll year as follows. State's Attorney, $125,299.20. Sheriff, $108,000, 108,430.40. Auditor, $72,467.20. And Treasurer, $71,000, $71,510.40.
Thank you, Sean.
Yes.
Is there a motion to ratify that action?
Well, Mr. Chairman, since I tried to be, do some compromise here and I got to say it certainly met with high degree of opposition from certain parties. But my intent was to try to break a deadlock because the week before you were unable to get any kind of consensus on this thing. So we put out and did some research. And I'm going to make that public right now because I know that the State's Attorney, to be full disclosure, was over by 2% and our, our registrar was over by 5%. So we come back with a 1.5% for each, which I learned something about our, our State's Attorney. And I did check with other counties and found that there were compensation was more than that. But I don't know if their base salary, what that was, but I just know the percentage of what they got. But our State's Attorney, to his credit, carries a full caseload. And that is rare because other states attorneys carry a few, a few cases, but administer their particular department while ours is doing both. And I thought that was a commendable act and probably in line with a 1.5% raise. And in order to be fair, I thought that our registrar was, was over, was that. And in next year, while that seems over, next year, they will probably be back in line where they have to be for their compensation. So I propose that and I will make sure that we split the auditor and the treasurer in their raises to bring them up to a level where they are to be, but do that over a two-year period. And I also recommended a 3% increase for our sheriff, which brought him up to speed. So that was my motion then and we had a 3, 2, or we had a 3, 1 vote. And I imagine we will get a 3, 2 negative vote, but I'm going to offer it one more time because I think it's fair compensation.
I'll take that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I'll.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes, I'll speak. I'm going to put my mask down just for a second here. Yeah, Jim and I, you know, worked on this a little bit. We do agree sometimes, but sometimes we disagree. And I think the week before I had a 1% for Tom Woolman on the table and, and nothing for the Register of Deeds because she was 5.5% over market. So we were kind of, I thought we had a, I thought we were going to be 0-0 because they were both ahead of schedule and Sheriff Steve Swenson was ahead. And I was fine with that 3% and then, of course, the auditor and treasurer were, were split over that two-year period. So I guess that's where, I thought we voted on it last week and it was 3 to 1. And so that's just my comments. You know, Jim, we, we agree to disagree sometimes and that's, that's normal.
That's fine.
So the last 12 years. So anyway.
Very good. Anyone else? Hearing now, now I'll ask for the vote. Sean?
Commissioner Aaronz?
No.
Commissioner Gillespie?
No.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes. Moving on, Toby, we have a, or do we just handle this? Sean, the first reading. Who wants to take that?
This is a first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County regarding a change of zone request for the property legally described as a southwest quarter, except lot H1 of Section 34 Township 100 North, range 49 west of the 5th Principal Meridian, Lincoln County, South Dakota, from the A1 Agricultural Zoning District to the RR Rural Residential Zoning District. Planning Commission recommends approval 4 to 1. The location is at this northwest corner of the intersection of 273rd Street and 480th Avenue near Harrisburg.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This first item before you is an application from Eric Willitsen on behalf of Carolyn Porter Trust to change his zone again of approximately 140 acres. This property is approximately four miles to the east of the city of Harrisburg. Current zoning of this is A1 Agricultural and RC Recreation Conservation. The proposed zoning would be rural residential. Conference of Plan Designation for this property is agricultural area. This, on the screen is the zoning and regulatory floodplain for the property. As you can see, the substantial portion of the property is currently zoned A1 Agricultural. There is a portion to the north that's zoned RC Rec. Conservation. There is a slight bit of regulatory floodplain on the property that's on the north side. The applicant did submit a concept plan with the application. The concept plan would be approximately a four-phase project with approximately 70 residential development or single-family lots. The property to the north, you can see is, looks sandy. That property, that portion of property will not change zone. That will continue to be RC Rec. Conservation. That's the portion of the property that touches Lake Elvin. And then there is a farmstead on the south side of the property. That as well will not be changed of zone. That will continue to be A1 Agricultural. And then on the corner of the county intersection there, that will not be rezoned as well. That will be left A1 Agricultural. As far as analysis, this application again is requesting 140 acres of 159 acre parcel to change of zone from A1 Agricultural and RC to rural residential for a multi-phase residential development. Future land use map of the County Conference of Plan defines this property as agricultural area. However, over the last 20 years, there's been substantial change in the vicinity of this area. Properties adjacent in the vicinity of Lake Elvin have been gradually moving away from agricultural to residential development. Staff feels that this particular development should meet the vicinity or should be in conformance with agricultural properties and the surrounding residential properties. Staff is continually working with the applicant on the preliminary subdivision plan to better lay out that so preserves that natural environment area and the surrounding area. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on that particular application.
Toby, would you go back to the map of the, that one there? So the, where the brown ends and the green begins, is that already developed?
No, that's zoned, that's a different zoning from the A1 Agricultural. That's RC Rec. Conservation.
So that zoned is what now?
RC Rec. Conservation.
Okay. So this, when rezoning this, does that change that zone up there on the north part?
A portion of it, but the directly, a strip of it on the north side of it will continue to be RC Conservation. My understanding is that the applicant's, well, be the owner of the property is currently working with the Game Fish and Parks to see if there's some interest in the Game Fish and Parks purchasing that.
Purchasing that particular portion? Now, I noticed to the northeast, you have another subdivision up there, correct?
Yes.
How many, how many buildings are up? How many homes are up there?
Between Lakeview Estates, which is the most recent, which is what you can see on there, I believe there's probably 20 lots within there. Just north of that's Copperwood Estates. There's approximately 20 more in there as well, too.
If we rezone this with all the homes that are changed there, that's going to open this whole area up to housing, don't you think?
I think, I think that consistently that we've looked at the area adjacent and vicinity of the lake. I doubt that the county would entertain anything beyond that across from the lake or. Again, we want to try to preserve as much agricultural property as we can. If you recall this, there was an application for this two years ago to change the zone of this property. But that, that application was incomplete. It just showed eight lots. Yeah. But this one, staff requested and the board requested at that time that the applicant go back and do a comprehensive plan of what they want to do with that property. So that's what we've received at this stage. And again, there is no direct criteria for your approval. But if I go back to some of the concerns that we've had over the years, primarily locations off of township roads, this one checks the boxes on that. It would be off of two county hard surface roads. And also that, again, a portion of this property, if you look, that north side and then the east side, it's primarily grazing land. So the value of that agricultural property for half of it is probably.
Can you go back to their site plan, please? So they have two access points, correct?
Proposed, correct.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
Toby, this is when we tabled the CUP on this, correct?
The preliminary plan, yes.
Okay, because they were going to provide some more information. Have they done that? There was supposed to be an erosion and drainage plan. Is that correct?
Yes, we're working with them on that. Yeah. What Commissioner Landine is referring to is there's a two-step to this process. The first would be the change of zone. The second would be the subdivision plan. The Planning Commission did table the subdivision plan because staff felt that there were some incomplete items of that. Staff is working with the applicant on that as well as some other items with that.
Very good, Toby. Anything else on this one?
Nope.
Okay.
You've scheduled the second reading for this on your meeting on the 22nd. It's allowed to be a public hearing as well.
Very good.
Okay, this next item is a change of zone, or go ahead, Sean.
This is a first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County regarding a change of zone request for the property legally described as Zon Track 1, except the north 176 feet thereof and except the south 208.7 feet thereof in the southwest quarter of Section 24 Township 100 North, range 51 west of the 5th Principal Meridian, Lincoln County, South Dakota, from the A1 Agricultural Zoning District to the C Commercial Zoning District. Planning Commission recommends approval 5-0. Location is 27068 469th Avenue near T.
Okay. Good morning again. This is an application from Brian and Lisa Gady. This would be an application to change his zone approximately three, three acres out of a four-acre parcel to the A1, from the A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District. This property is actually adjacent to the city of T. Current zoning of this is A1 Agricultural. Again, the proposed zoning is C Commercial. Conference of Plan identifies this property as urban expansion area. On the screen is the zoning and regulatory floodplain of the property. As you can see, directly to the east, there is substantial commercial development as part of a sub, or a commercial subdivision that's been taking place for the last 20 years. There is regulatory floodplain on the property, as you can see. So any development will require floodplain development permit from Lincoln County. The concept plan that was submitted with the application. And again, this is within the city of T's growth area, so the concept plan has been reviewed by their planning commission and their city council. So as submitted, and again, this is just a concept plan, what, what the request is to change the zoning to C Commercial, so any use within the commercial district would be allowed. But what was submitted as a concept plan would be essentially outdoor storage. There would be no improvement to the property, other than some gravel placed on the property. But essentially, it would be mapped out for, for, for storage, essentially campers and recreational vehicle types of that. As far as analysis, again, this is changing the zoning approximately three acres of a four-acre parcel from the A1 Agricultural Zoning District to the C Commercial District. Feature, or the future land use map identifies this as urban expansion area. This proposal is consistent with the city of T Conference of Plan. Their Conference of Plan does show this as future commercial area. Properties adjacent to the east of this has been developed and subdivided as commercial uses for over 20 years. It should be compatible with existing single-family residential to the north and the south. However, if approved, this would require a conditional use permit. And as part of that conditional use permit, staff would recommend that there be some screening and security placed on the property. So again, this is a rural resident, or an A1 Agricultural zoned property, but there is use as rural residential. There is a house on the property. That will remain on the property and that will be left zoned A1 Agricultural. It'll just be the south and the further east part of the property that will be utilized for the outdoor storage. Now with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff.
Does the city of T, have they given approval of this thing or do they have to?
They've given approval of the concept plan, yes.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Toby, I think we're good to go on that one?
Okay.
You talking about MPO?
Yes. So what's before you is the 2021 MPO Unified Work Plan Program Agreement. This is a sub-agreement between Lincoln County and the Southeastern Council of Governments to utilize this pass-through for federal funds. Those federal funds are used for personnel services. The highway superintendent, myself and the planner for Lincoln County, we submit based on our work associated with transportation planning for reimbursement of those funds. So the agreement before you is essentially the same as last year, same amount, so it's just under $50,000. With that, just asking for approval of that agreement so we can get that submitted.
You've heard the request. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second, Gillespie.
Hearing a motion and a second. Any questions? Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes, thank you, Toby.
Thank you.
Sheriff? Good morning.
I'm just a couple of things. Working with the state with CARES Act, which brings me back to Commissioner Schmidt's comments about they've got money that they haven't spent. I put in a proposal to upgrade our dispatch councils, which is going to need to be done in the near future. Our system is no longer supported. So since 2014, we can't buy parts or get technical service on it. So I had Mr. Baldwin put together what it would take to upgrade our system and I submitted that to the CARES Act folks. As you can see, it's a pretty expensive upgrade. However, it does make our system completely mobile. We could dispatch from home if need be, if COVID was to strike our dispatch center, it would, could effectively shut it down and it has done that in the state of South Dakota. I talked to some people in Butte County who actually had to transfer their dispatch to Lawrence County for four days because of COVID. I'm getting some kick or some pushback from the state. We have a million dollars left that, that more than likely won't be spent. I think this is a great investment for Lincoln County and really for the, the public safety in South Dakota. So if anybody's interested in reaching out to state officials to, to nudge them a little bit, that'd be great. But what I'm asking for is it's still, we're still hanging on by a thread. I've got some calls that I'm still waiting for. But contingent on CARES Act approving this purchase, I would like your permission or vote to purchase it contingent upon it being able to be paid for by CARES. The reason for that is the timing. We're running out of time and we'd have to get this ordered this week in order for it to work. I anticipate hearing back from the governor's office hopefully today.
Is there any situation that they might be looking to only do portion of it and they're looking to?
The, the last information I received was however, they thought it was a great proposal that they didn't know, that they thought maybe there was a different way to make our system mobile, which, talking with Todd, who knows the radio system up and down, there is no other option. There is a cheaper version of this, not made by Motorola. It's made by Z-tron. But they're, it just, the, the whole concept has been denied so far.
Okay. You've heard the request to have a contingent authorization to make this purchase if the funding is approved through the COVID funding. Is there a motion to that effect?
I will so move.
Motion and second. Any other questions on that?
What's the dollar amount of this purchase?
That's through Sioux Falls two-way.
Sean?
Make some calls today.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that.
And who was the first and second? Sorry.
Commissioner Schmidt, Commissioner Aaronz.
Thank you. Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would say that if you, commissioners are so inclined, we can easily make a phone call, send an email, you know, they're on the state thing. I think it's incumbent because this is a great thing for us.
Yeah, this would be a huge investment for, for Lincoln County.
Very good. And now we got to talk about animal control contract.
And I sent this up to Sean. I'm assuming. And I sent this up to Sean, I'm assuming you, that you have it. We just need authorization for the chair to sign the 2021 animal control contract.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved, Mr. Chairman, Gillespie.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Terry.
Morning. I have before you approve and authorize the chair to sign a bridge improvement grant application. I have two of them this morning. The first one is going to be for Structure 42148050. That is the Lake Alvin Bridge. Will be applying for a replacement grant for this, this structure. Overall cost on this is going to be probably close to 1.7. So we're looking to do a 20% match. So our share would be roughly 350-ish or something. Hopefully, we get it, so. We're just looking for approval on that.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions on that? Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Next structure I have, I have another bridge improvement grant application. This is for Structure 42020201. This structure is located on 466th Avenue and 288th Street. It's about a tenth of a mile south of that. So it's County Road 105 and County Road 140 intersection. Back in 14, this structure had the abutments washed out on both sides from the flood in 14. We, we put a lot of money into this structure already, building that back up, rip wrapping and protecting this structure. And I had let you guys know here several weeks ago that this structure has some issues, some bearing joints on the end. So we're going to be applying for a rehabilitate or preservation grant on this one. Projected costs are going to be 650, 700,000. Again, this is a 20% match. So looking for approval on this one.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second, Gillespie.
Motion, Landine, second by Commissioner Gillespie. Any other questions on it? Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine or Commissioner, Commissioner? I wish you pretended. Which one of you two want to take the lead on this one?
On the...
Joint agreement with Harrisburg.
I can go ahead.
Okay, very good.
I was contacted, and I know Terry was contacted. Maybe there's some questions that anybody has for him. But to amend the joint powers agreement, originally, when we were negotiating that, it was 2.5 million to take those sections of road. And then we were still going to do the paving project on Cliff Avenue in, within the municipality that the highway superintendent had planned on. They're wanting to do some other improvements, I believe, leading up to that intersection. And so they would rather have the 2.7 million and then forego the paving that was planned for 2021, just immediately north of that intersection on County Road 123. So there's an amended joint powers agreement in the sheriff file that I worked on with our state's attorney's office. And so would just be wanting to move to approve that amended agreement, and I would make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any clarification? It sounds like a pretty much of a wash, Terry. You agree?
Yeah, it's going to be really close for the 200,000, because I think I budgeted about 140,000 per mile for the Mill and Overlay, so I mean, we'll, it'll be close.
Okay. With that, if there's no further questions, Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes, thank you for getting that done. Then we're going to talk some more about our transportation plan.
Right.
Commissioner Landine?
Commissioner Poppins and myself met with the highway superintendent to talk about the master transportation plan that was completed back in November of 2019, and it was started much earlier than that. As part of that, we did public outreach. There were several meetings that were held in both Canton and Harrisburg just to get both the north half of the county and the southern half of the county input. We also, there was a website that was set up for the study, and that allowed the sharing of study documents and what have you. And there was also an online survey that people could take. And so all of that information was gathered. There were stakeholder meetings with people from the state. HDR is actually the one that did the study. And all of that can be found in the Lincoln County Master Transportation Plan, if anybody has any specific questions about that. And moving forward, short-term projects that were proposed, there were several. Now, with Highway 100 and Highway, County Road 106, there's projects in place for those. So that somewhat has changed, at least in our view when we met, projects that were short-term and not going to be, I guess, affected by those projects that were already underway and engineered. So we went through and prioritized those projects. And the first project that we prioritized was some safety improvements. And I'm just going to talk about these in general, and then if we want to make motions on each one, we sure can. But the priority was on Highway 17 and 106 to do some safety improvements there at that intersection because of the number of accidents that were there with an estimated cost of $60,000. And Terry, forgive me, but maybe it'll be less than that. Is that on the high end?
Yeah, I think that's going to be on the high end, because some of these improvements on that intersection have already taken place. You know, reflective tape on the, on the stop sign posts or early warning signs. That, that was part of the sign program that was done in 2017. So some improvements have been done.
And then, which is item, let's see. It's the last item, item five under 6B. Those are also safety improvements along that same corridor. And Terry, you don't need any kind of traffic study for that, correct?
I think we can look at specific intersections along the corridor and do some minor improvements with some signage. There is one possible intersection that, that could probably use some turn lanes. And that would be 105 and County Highway 116, the Klondike Road there. There's quite a bit of turning traffic from Lennox there. Maybe, I mean, it could call for a northbound turn lane, you know, turn, turning east. But, but again, that's something that, I don't know that it would take too much of a study to determine what we would need there. But we do have a pretty, pretty wide right-of-way there, so it's possible we could build additional lanes in there without acquiring right-of-way. That's possible, but-
Coming from the south, I think, would be the best use of turning lane there, because that's where all the traffic is coming out of Lennox and coming up.
So as far as items two and five on the, under B on the agenda, do you need a motion to go ahead and start making those safety improvements, or are you able to just do that, or?
I, I think as far as doing signage, painting, I don't think I need a motion to proceed with that. But if we, if we wanted to do a study at that intersection that I just spoke of to determine if we want to do a turn lane there, that, that would be, but again, we can determine that later. I can, I can talk with some, some engineers about, you know, the possibility of what we may need there, you know, or what a study. Because it might be, might be more of a condensed study, I don't, because it's going to be fairly, you know, it's, it's kind of a specific area. Like I said, I, it's not on, this intersection didn't even peg out on our list for intersections in the master transportation plan as needing improvements, you know. But I just, I just know that's probably one of the busiest intersections along that whole corridor.
Sure. So, but we do need traffic studies on items three and four. So items three and four is at the intersection of County 106 and 123. That's the Tebbens Corner.
Yes, yes. That intersection pegged out number three, as far as worst in the county for improvements, or as far as accident rates. And again, you know, I know we rebuilt this thing, you know, what, 2012 or 13, somewhere in there. But this thing is, it's really tight in there, you know. And again, I did have this on, on my, my 2021 budget, but I understand with funding. You know, but if we can get going on this, to determine what we want to put there, something safer than, than the lights that are there could be very beneficial for the traveling public along there.
So the goal would be to do the traffic study and then figure out what we're doing a signal or roundabout, and then have that engineered?
Yes.
And then we would get cost estimates on what the actual project was, so we don't really have any idea at this point.
That's correct. Now, one thing on that intersection, it's, again, the biggest cost, I, well, I mean, maybe it's not going to be the biggest cost of the intersection, but we will have to acquire right-of-way easements there, because that is, that is really tight in there. You know, if that's, I know that the house, I think the house on the northwest corner is currently for sale, you know. So if we wanted to do anything now, it'd be a time. I don't know if it's, maybe it's in sale pending, I don't know. But, you know, like I said, I, I think at some point, we, we need to widen that out, so.
And then item four, at the intersection of County Road 110 and 117, that's the, south of Baker Crossing.
That is correct. That's going to be south of the new school. And again, you know, this, the study that, that intersection pegged out number 13 in, in the transportation plan as far as accidents and safety. Again, that is a very tight intersection. Radios are pretty small in there. It's, it's hard for trucks to get around and this and that. You know, and I know when the school did their traffic impact study for the school, and their, their access about half a mile north of this, three quarters mile north. In their study, it said at some point after the school opens, this intersection is going to have to be redone, or it's going to have to, it's going to need some attention, you know. So having this one on there, and again, this is on the short-term list, doing a study here to determine what we want to put there. You know, whether it's just, if we want to maintain a four-way stop, I don't know why we would. Or doing a signalized, or doing another roundabout there possibly. You know, but again, if we had an impact study there, we could, we could determine what and what size of whichever one of those options we would put there, so.
Well, at this point, is there any further discussion? Otherwise, it looks appropriate to have a, a motion to do those studies, so.
I would make that motion to do the traffic studies in items 6B, 3, and 4.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none. Sean?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
And then, Mr. Chairman, circling back to 6B1, I've been working with, as you know, you and I working with Terry Floyd on the road projects and getting the, some of the things going that were in the master transportation plan, since we spent so much money to do it. We don't want it to get outdated before we do any of those projects. I would ask to be part of that group and make a motion to that effect. And then my suggestion would be, since the traffic studies probably won't be done until after the first of the year, that perhaps Commissioner Gibbon, Commissioner-elect Gibbon would want to be part of that working group. And so I would make that motion today.
Is there a second to that effect?
I'll second that.
Very good. Any discussion on that? You start getting appointed early. Sean, I think we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any further, you want to just wait on doing that study, then on number five? For the turning lane?
Yeah, I'll determine that. Let me, let me do a little more research on that, and I'll, I'll talk with IMEG. Again, I had talked to them about doing these impact studies. And I know back in 17, when we did the Cliff, or the Louise Avenue Roundabout, they had a different, they brought in a, a different engineering firm to do that. But now, since they're IMEG, they can do it in-house. So it, the results could come a little quicker, and, and the cost is going to be a little lower than, than what we paid back then, so.
All right, very good. Thank you.
I'll ask, I'll ask them about that one, so.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Good morning, Julia. Thanks, Terry, by the way.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First things first, and that would be to accept the retirement of Jackie Harrison, appraiser, effective the 18th of December.
Is there a motion to that, that effect?
So moved, Mr. Chairman, Gillespie.
Second?
Second.
Landine? When you're ready, Sean.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Next would be to discuss a policy exception. John Rambo is requesting that 40 hours of vacation be paid out for Denise Winter. Although Denise has been pretty adamant about not wanting to take vacation, she does have 150 hours of vacation on the books. So John has requested an exception to pay out 40 hours of vacation, which would be approximately $900.
You've heard the request or explanation. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Sean, when you're ready.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Next would be to discuss the differential between 911 dispatcher and then also deputy sheriffs. The sheriff and also the auditor would like to, for continuity purposes, just mirror how much the night and weekend differential is between the dispatchers and the deputy sheriff. So currently, dispatchers receive 50, 50 cents per hour extra, and then 25 cents extra for Saturday and Sunday shifts. However, their request would be to mirror the, the collective bargaining unit for 75 and 75 cents an hour.
You've heard the explanation and request. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. If there's no questions, I'll ask Sean for the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Okay. Lastly, would be the VSO contract between unit, union and Lincoln Counties. It's very, very similar to what we've done in the past. It's that 70/30 split. Here are the numbers behind the split, if you would like to review those. Slight increase, the increase is only due to a slight wage increase and then also a benefits increase as well.
Again, you've heard the explanation. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and second. If there's no other questions, I'll ask Sean to call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Out of auditor. It's amazing, if I actually look at the right agenda, how much better I do at following along, isn't it? Thank you.
Okay, so, in talking with John Hanson regarding the transfer station, when we did the original cash transfer earlier, I transferred whatever the dollar amount was, but I didn't take into consideration the tipping fees for November and December. So we still have budgeted cash to be able to transfer. So I'm looking to do a transfer of $25,000, and I'm almost confident that that's going to take us through everything that needs to be cleared up for the end of the year.
You've heard the explanation. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
And then the second thing is, is we received the Minnehaha County Juvenile Detention Contract. It has, has gone up 3% from last year. Last year, we were looking at 236 for their daily rate. It is now 244. The community supervision and the Evening Report Center are also going up 3%. So, I need authorization for you to sign the contract.
You've heard the request, is there?
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Gillespie.
Any questions? Otherwise, I'll ask Sean.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Thank you.
Question, Sheriff. How many people do we have in juvenile detention right now?
Honestly, that doesn't come through my office, so I don't know.
You don't? Okay.
I can find out.
Yeah.
Very good. Last item on the agenda is the transfer station discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I put that on the, put that on the agenda. I was contacted last week by a gen, gentleman who, I think is Mr. Leibengood called, and was interested in looking at some of the assets that we have at our transfer station. And having, we have never discussed the assets that were there. I asked him what, you know, what assets he was thinking about, and he was looking at a tractor and trailer. So, I got ahold of John. And John, being the dutiful employee that he is, he's going to give us probably a rundown of what assets we do have there and what do we wish to, how do we wish to dispose of them. So, John, I'll just let that, you, if you would, kind of give what, what you think our assets are and what we can sell and what we can't and stuff like that.
John, if I could interrupt you just to get started here, we've had several conversations about possibly somebody being interested. Have there been any follow-up on that? Kind of did.
The main follow-up with the city of Sioux Falls, turns out their main concern, they're thinking about purchasing a tractor-trailer from us to use for mattresses. They want to load it with mattresses for recycling. So, not necessarily in the actual transfer station. The other larger garbage hauler out of Sioux Falls, Novak, showed some interest and I encouraged him to contact our county commissioners. And it sounds to me like nobody got contacted, so.
Did anybody have a contact?
Mr. Chairman, I, I had a, not Novak, I had a municipality contact me about wanting to move. And I told them if they were serious about that, they should send a proposal. I don't think they have.
Okay. There was just a, at one time with Novak, since that name was put out there, that they'd have some interest enough to keep it open, you know, one day a week or one day a month for general public. But if that isn't going to happen, then anyway, thank you for letting me interrupt you.
Yeah, no problem. I mean, mainly the information I get on that, they're, they're just kind of looking for numbers and ideas and so.
Yep.
So.
Cool.
Yeah, we have the two tractors and two trailers. If the city of Sioux Falls would be interested in either one, both, I don't, I'm not sure. But I do have the list of our, of our assets. And I've also spoke with John and Terry a little bit about assets as far as, you know, if we kept stuff within the county, what could be utilized from the transfer station within the county. But this is our 2002 Sterling. You can see with the highlighted, original cost, of course. I have no idea what this tractor would be worth. It's, it's showing its wear. And unfortunately, our newer tractor-trailer is in worse shape than our older tractor-trailer. Reason being is the, the older trailer that we have is, is been redone, the flooring and the walls. We put about 14,000 into those here a while back, into that trailer. And that, yeah, that's this one. And then that freightliner we recently purchased, oh, well, a couple of years ago. And it, it's got some wear to it as well, but that's what we've been using recently. This is our asset on the SpecTech trailer that we purchased in 2013 with the grant from the state. And this is the newer trailer, which, like I say, it's, it's showing some wear. It's got some holes in the floor. The hydraulics, the push blade, everything on it works good. And if they are interested in using it for mattresses, that's not going to leak anyway. So, my suggestion would be, well, whatever, I don't know. I don't know what they want to do.
I think appropriate is have somebody out of their office give us a proposal and, and if we can entertain it and it seems logical.
I think what they were after, Mr. Chairman, was the fact that they want, didn't want to get ahead of time. So, really, all it has to do is, if it's a trailer, I just think, John, you call them up and tell them to come on down and evaluate and, you know, see what they're interested in. Show them both.
Besides that, won't we have a lawnmower and?
Well, yeah. Right. You know, we got that Hustler mower with that Argo Alice. I'm getting all my papers mixed up here, but there's, I...
I'm going to interrupt on that. Is there any chance we need that over at the 4H facility or somewhere else?
Just the one, but the, yes, the Hustler, yes. The Argo Alice, we could surplus. It's not running right. It's, it's needed work. It's been worked on, patched, repaired. And I think that Argo Alice was purchased in 1999.
That's old, yeah.
You know, we've got some, I've talked with the highway shop about, we've got two dumpsters down below that we haven't used. We used to use them when we did recycling. And the highway department goes out and picks up road ditch trash. I think that'd be wise for them to think about, this is just one of those containers on the top here that we...
John, it would be appropriate, we set up a committee to do the, if we surplus, we're going to surplus it, we need to do an appraisal of it, set a committee up to appraise all assets out there and...
That would make sense, yep.
Would that be your, a motion?
I could, I could certainly make a motion that we, two things. One, John, that we instruct John to notify the, the landfill individuals to come down, take a bid. And the rest of it would be to set up a committee to surplus all remaining items that we can't use ourselves. But that would be part of the group that would decide that. That would be in my motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any other questions on that? You have a complete list, so although we have not declared it surplus, someone give me, do we need to actually declare it surplus to appraise it prior to, for purposes or will, if we appraise it, can we then declare it surplus? Someone give me counsel on that, please.
It has to be appraised at some point as a surplus in order to do it. I don't think the order makes it different.
That's what I just wanted to make sure. All right. Very good. So, Sean, please call the roll.
Who was on this committee?
Volunteer.
I have one volunteer. Is there another volunteer? Where's Terry when you need to volun? You know who would be a great person? Doesn't live far. Knows equipment just as much as anything. Harold, would you be willing to volunteer?
I guess if I'm a volunteer, I'll...
I'm not. If you would be willing, that would be awesome. All right.
Mr. Aaron's, did you want to volunteer? I saw you have your hand.
All right, so we have our three. Perfect. So, there are your three. Sean?
Ready for a vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yep.
Commissioner Gillespie?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Harold.
They used to call that Harold impressment. Why did, they used to, when they wanted, so they didn't ask yes or no, they just impressed.
That concludes our regular business items. I do have a request for executive session under STCL 125-2, paragraph three. Is there a motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This would be consulting with legal counsel and reviewing communications with legal counsel about proposed or pending litigation or contractual matters under STCL 125-2, sec, section three, subsection three.
And Mr. Chairman, I also need an executive session for employee evaluations. So, be under number one.
Second on this one, is there a second to this? We'll take the executive session on that. Refresh my memory, do we have to come out under two different items and re-motion?
I think you can go in under one vote for both of them.
Okay. All right, so the motion, if you would, to include under the other subsection. Commissioner Gillespie?
Okay, yes, under STCL 125-2, subsection one also.
Second.